...States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, immunizable with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, opening remarks, just want to make a housekeeping item. I went to the, uh, Link Trip sponsored by the ARC last week for, uh, this was four days. Met a lot of great people, had a lot of great information about transportation, sustainability, all kinds of issues related to municipal issues and relations with counties and wonderful networking opportunity. And last week when I talked about it, or last meeting, I mentioned that there was funded by the ARC, which it was, but it's also funded by City of Brookhaven out of the travel budget. So it was a jointly funded, um, trip, just wanted to make that clarification. Um, also, tonight we had a, um, nice meal, a great meal, uh, from Verde Restaurant and Brookhaven Restaurant, and we wanted to thank them for that. We did pay for it, but still it was a great meal. And from this point forward, if any other Brookhaven businesses, restaurants, that want to provide, sell us meals for our, you know, after our work sessions on our city council meetings, please contact the, uh, city manager or the city clerk about that. We'd love to thank you in public as well. But Verde Restaurant, thank you if anybody here from Verde, over on Dresden, it was a great meal, we appreciate it, and thank you. All right? Any agenda announcements? I'm not moving anything anymore, all right? Okay? Okay, and right now, we will open the, uh, floor for public comment. So the way this goes is, um, is how long is the public comment period?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, and you'll have three minutes apiece. If you could just please take the forms that are, I guess, at the front, just sign the forms and hand them to the city clerk or the communications, uh, Dana, you're the only one who's gonna take them. Dana here will take the form. So if you'd like to make any comment, please hand her the data and, uh, we'll recognize you in order that they were received. Bonnie Mahar, is that right?
Major.
Major, Bonnie Major? Is there a Bonnie Major here? There we go. All right. If you'd just come to the microphone and state your name and your neighborhood and... And this is, you know, this is not, we can't do a two-way conversation here. This is for you to comment to us about what your opinions are. We can't answer questions and go back and forth. You just please comment.
Okay.
Just state your name and where you're from and...
Bonnie Major, um, and I am not a resident of Brookhaven. I'm here in support of, um, an existing resident and, um, future homeowner that wants to, uh, build in the City of Brookhaven. And my, um, reason for being here is to, um, state my support in, um, making, I guess, an agenda item or putting on the agenda for future, um, discussion and perhaps, um, changing the height restriction for the, um, building, new construction build in the City of Brookhaven. Sorry, I'm nervous.
Right.
Um, basically, uh, what, I've been in real estate for over eleven years, um, specifically, uh, nine years for new construction and builds, and, um, I have a client and homeowner, an existing, uh, Lynnwood Park homeowner that, um, wants to, that has purchased a lot in the City of Brookhaven and would like to, um, build a home that they would like to build. Basically, the restriction is, as you know, the, um, thirty-five feet from the threshold to the highest point is the, um, is the, uh...
Current building.
Current building code, thank you. And, um, the surrounding areas, um, many surrounding areas, and, and basically Georgia is thirty-five feet from the grade to the midpoint, an average of thirty-five feet from the grade to the midpoint of the roof. And basically, I'd just like to say that, um, the, um, these are surrounding high-end communities, Chastain, Buckheads, Sandy Springs, Jones Creek, Alpharetta. This home that they want to build has been also built in all of these areas. With this tight restriction, it's basically jeopardizing the growth and potential desirability of the future homeowners, and also, we feel tremendously lowering the tax base considerably for future years. Um, basically, the size of the homes, um, obviously a restriction's put in place to keep things in perspective, um, but you also need to entice future development and builders and homeowners that want to come and, and build nice homes, um, not McMansions, but very nice homes, um, in the communities and raise their families. Um, it's my understanding that the restriction was put in place for those existing ranch homeowners, and, um, I feel that that's the beauty of the scape, um, the existing street scape. Is that my time?
No, you got fifteen twenty.
Okay. Um, that is, has such uniqueness and charm and diversity, um, and that this would basically, the restriction currently in place really puts restrictions to one-and-a-half-story homes or two-story traditional homes, which is what we'd like to build, um, with a flat roof line.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Um, next comment.
Joseph Bell.
Thank you for allowing me to approach you guys and somebody as well for, uh, making a presentation on my behalf. So, we, I've lived here now for approximately six years in the Lynnwood community, love Brookhaven, um, had no idea how much I would love Brookhaven, but I've been very pleasantly surprised. During this time, I got married approximately one year ago, and, um, me, my wife and I, Blair, we actually bought a lot a couple months ago in Ashford Park off Redding Road. We planned to build our first home together. Now, that being said, we're not looking to build a McMansion, we're not looking to build a three-story home or high-rise, anything crazy, just a two-story home to eventually be able to raise a family at that given location. And you can imagine the shock and dismay when we go to at least start looking, uh, permit the home itself, and we find out that a home that we had visited, and we almost bought in Sandy Springs, but we passed up, and we love Brookhaven so much, we decided to buy a lot and build that home. We visit the home in Sandy Springs, Milton, Alpharetta, Buckhead, all these different locations, and we find out we can't build the same home in Brookhaven where we want to be at, um, not to go through the thirty-five feet midpoint, you guys already know that already, but really, more than anything else, we're not trying to change the face of that community, Ashford Park or Redding Road. There's already ten homes that are between forty to forty-five feet, some even beyond that. We're not even looking to be the biggest home, not even close to the biggest home. We're just looking to fit in and have a similar two-story home, uh, that we can grow into. That being said, I mean, I guess we look at the neighborhood itself, and we look at the advantages of changing from thirty-five feet max out to thirty-five feet mid-point, or even whatever you guys might choose. We have a chance to raise the tax base, and they, Brookhaven, a very attractive neighborhood, city for other people to move to. This one could be used for city improvements, parks and recreations, countless other programs. There's so many advantages, plus it's gonna make the city much more attractive to people who might be looking for that next place to live. Um, you know, I, I, really, I can make this argument, let me give you stats, numbers don't lie. Recent article in the AJC, they say in almost every single city and county in the state of Georgia, from April 2012 to March of 2013, there was very rapid growth in permits for single-family homes. In Cherokee County alone, seventy-eight percent growth. DeKalb County was down three point eight percent. So you know what the number-one city reason for that was? Restrictive government. And I hope, we voted for Brookhaven to break away from the bureaucracy of it all and have the individual freedoms to build the home we want and have a great community.
You got twenty more seconds.
That would be it. I guess my last thing I would just leave you with is, I would ask you to raise the roof height limitation to allow us to compete with the other cities, and to provide the opportunity for Brookhaven citizens, just like us, to build a nice home to raise a family that we can grow into and be proud of.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna raise the roof, that's right.
Raise the roof.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, I'm Aubrey Blais, representing the Pink Pony. My family has lived in the Brookhaven area since I returned from the military, and my parents lived here, and we love it as well. We even loved it when we became part of the Pink Pony. So we're here to oppose your ordinance, which would change the hours and roll the hours of what time we close. We bring over three hundred thousand people a year through our doors in Brookhaven. Three hundred thousand people, that's a lot of people. I've talked to you before about the four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars a year we give to the cab and taxes that should be going to Brookhaven. But something else I want you to consider is all those patrons who come into Brookhaven, buy gas, buy food, buy clothes, they stop at the grocery stores, they do all the things we all do, and they do it in Brookhaven. They do it in Brookhaven. Our employees, their kids in child daycare, they go to churches in Brookhaven, they go to restaurants in Brookhaven. You might be able to calculate the tax dollars you lose on the pony, but it's very, very difficult to calculate the tax dollars you use from three hundred thousand people coming into this city and spending money in Brookhaven. And then, there is also the additional people that work in the pony. That amount is almost incalculable. Now, what I will tell you is, I've mentioned it the first time today, and we're doing research on it, and after that, my phone just blew up. If you don't want us, let us go. There's a process called de-annexation, thirty-six dash thirty-six dash twenty-four, and we won't be an island, because most of the businesses that are affected have already come to me and said, can we be included in this de-annexation? If you don't want us, let us go. Start talking among yourself that you're not pro-business, you're anti-business, and you don't want businesses that have alcohol. Let us go back to DeKalb County, which is pro-business. I just heard today, they're giving credits for businesses coming in who are hiring folks. One other thing I want to say, it's been mentioned that you have passed no ordinance that will put the Pink Pony out of business. The ordinance you have passed will put the Pink Pony out of business. It doesn't call us by name, but it's like passing an ordinance and telling McDonald's, you can't sell burgers, and you can't eat inside, and you can't sell french fries. It puts you out of business, because you're gonna go right across the line and get to Burger King. The ordinance you now have on the books that is being implemented in steps puts the Pink Pony out of business, the impact it puts us out. I thank you very much, and again, I want to leave you. We are dead serious about this. If you don't want businesses that sell alcohol or sell alcohol in Brookhaven, let us go. There's a process for de-annexation, I'm working on it right now, and I'll be happy to meet with anyone about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Next?
Mayor, we have no others.
One more?
Yeah, one more.
One more? Okay.
Bonnie Mayor?
Oh, you know, there's a three-minute limit, Ronnie, you sure?
Ah, that's a big guy. We got about three issues. I want to thank y'all, everyone of y'all very much, for y'all's help with Brookhaven Bolt. The City of Brookhaven was great, cutting the grass, patching the holes, uh, y'all paid for the police officers that I didn't know about, you paid for the Jiffy Johnny, the whole gig. It was just a successful thing to see all these people come to Brookhaven, first thing. Thank you. The second thing is this young couple over here wants to build a house, one house over from me. My house is the Mc Daddy house, you know, it's the big one. And Redding Road is on a street with all, uh, state lots. I just counted twelve new, twelve that are already there, and there's six in the next two months will be coming out of the ground. You would be doing yourself a disservice by having a high restriction, because it is on a street, uh, Redding Road and Ashford Road are state lots. So instead of having a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar house, you're gonna have about a million six, because this is an area, it's real estate, and we call it Area Fifty-One, and that's right in the middle of your Brookhaven, is the hottest area that is. Number two. Number three, I'm a Brookhaven, uh, community leader, my wife's on the Chandler, uh, Aubrey here, I wasn't gonna say anything, I shut my mouth, I said none, I've got my half a minute here. Uh, the Pink Pony has been there for years. I think we have other issues we really need to worry about than the Pink Pony, and he was right, even though the liquor license, the dancing permits, the liquor they sell, these girls, they're in daycare, they go to Quick Trip, they go to Waffle House, they go to Fuzzy's, they spend their tax dollar. And if you don't want to go there, let's not try to be this moral something that we're not. We have a lot more issues to do with building this city than to mess with the Pink Pony for now. If Verde Lees runs up in seven years, then go after them, but we have a lot more issues, and, and this is not aimed at one of y'all specifically, but this is my Brookhaven too, and I don't want you to spend ten million dollars that we don't have on litigation. We can use that ten million to build our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anything else? Anybody else?
Andre McDonald.
Do you need Mr. Mayor, council members, concerned citizens, as well as business owners and their employees and families? Name's Andrew McDonald, I, I'm an employee for Cream Ultra Lounge, we're located at thirty-four twenty-nine Beaufort Highway. I believe that our great expectation of being here as a group is to be an asset to the City of Brookhaven. We, through our, to, being able to continue to maintain a social environment of entertainment for a community, uh, as it's a controlled environment, that's safe, and that, um, you know, that, uh, my concern is that if you change our hours of operation, it's gonna change, it's gonna change the livelihood of a number of people, and, uh...
Just if you can speak.
I apologize. Thank you.
And can you repeat the name of the establishment?
I work for Cream Ultra Lounge.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, we're at thirty-two twenty-nine Beaufort Highway. As I stated, I, uh, is, our, our hopefulness is to be an asset to the City of Brookhaven. Uh, we provide a social entertainment, uh, organization that would allow our guests to be in a safe environment, as well as...
Oh, boy. You got a minute, a minute and fifty left?
Yes, sir.
Take a deep breath.
Yes, sir.
Take a deep breath. You've got plenty of time.
I, I just wanted to say that changing our hours is gonna really change a lot of the livelihoods of a lot, number of people. Me, for example, I work at night because during the day I have other objectives I have to, to take care of, uh, with my family and all, but that's, that's gonna make it a big deal for you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. And in the future, can we get, um, facilities, a boom stand for the, for the folks, so they don't have to turn to the side when they're trying to get to the microphone, stand, put the microphone center? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Marco, I'm the owner of Oveline Dog Irish Pub in town Brookhaven, and just to make a quick comment, we spent many, many dollars to build our location in Brookhaven, which we're very proud of. Through DeKalb County, we have the ability to serve liquor to, uh, three fifty-five in the morning. We rarely exercise the privilege. We went for the late-night permits that we would never run afoul with our regulars, and we would like to reserve the opportunity to do that. We would not exercise it often. I will however say that at this early juncture in the city, it is patently unfair to change the regulations of the businesses in the community that had been operating for many, many years under the current laws, and to not grandfather them or to tell them that they have to operate differently now that there is a new council is ridiculously unfair. It might work well for the, uh, city attorney, I don't know, but it's gonna end up in a lot of litigation, it's gonna cost the city a lot of money, and I suggest that there should be, not table, but just put to rest.
Thank you. There's no applause, please, in a, in a public comment session, I appreciate that. Um, anybody else?
Justin Dale.
Justin Dale?
Hey.
Is that right?
No.
Justin Dale.
I was trying to write on my lap, I'm sorry. Those of you who haven't met me, some of us met this morning. I'm not this tall.
If you pull it down. There you go. Okay, there we go.
Justin, stand up.
Public comment is not meant for council members to harass.
We've, we've been doing this for a long time. Uh, you're, you're a new city, and I think a lot of the problems and concerns that you have, that go to quality of life, and I believe, I understand quality of life. Um, I, I live in Smyrna, um, a lot of these problems can be solved with your police force coming into existence and actively policing and taking care of the problems that DeKalb County, and we all know, has not taken care of. So instead of coming after us, and you've heard it time and time again, and it's beginning to wonder why it's not seemed to really hit you guys yet, is, is the significant loss of revenue that will happen, not only to, to you guys, you know, there's already, I hear some, been some strife within you guys about, you know, whether or not you're gonna have to raise taxes or cut services, and I know that's not what you want. Don't destroy so many people's lives before you look at other legitimate options so that we can all coexist together. If a business is acting irresponsibly, by all means, go after them, but use your police force to do it. Do not do a broad sweeping amendment that is going to hurt so many people. I've got every dime I have invested into my business, it's all I've got. You know, just think about this, sit down and talk with some of us who are in this, between your police department and meeting with some of the businesses, I'm sure we can all solve everybody's concerns. You guys can keep getting revenue, I can start my family, everybody can smile and go on about their merry way, okay? I think I took less time than anybody.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. No, Ronnie, you can't have this remaining time. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. Um, the, should I make the motion to close the public comments? No. All right, public comments are closed, uh, now we'll go to the, um, consent agenda. Marie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, my... Consent agenda, uh, you have three items, approval of the May fourteenth, Mayor and City Council regular, um, meeting minutes, as well as the May fourteenth council agenda work session meeting minutes, and the third item is the appointment and ratification for clerk of the court and court administrator, which is Ms. Susan Hyatt.
All right, is there a motion? I'd like to recognize Susan Hyatt, but is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that we approve the consent agenda and it's, uh, published.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I just want to say that, uh, I want to congratulate Susan Hyatt for being our court administrator. She's got longer experience. I know you don't like the attention put on you, but we're excited to have you as our clerk and our court administrator, so thank you to Susan Hyatt. Um, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk and Court Administrator, please enter into the minutes that this consent agenda has passed. Announcements, are there any announcements? Anybody from the council? No? Brookhaven Bolt, Jim? Comment on how it went? How much money they raised for the...
I think Ronnie, I have heard of some, but I think it's gonna be somewhere thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, to school, but, uh, had a great raise, nobody got hurt, and everybody finished. The fun one about this one is, is Ashford Park, uh, has started a run club, and so there were twenty or thirty or forty or more kids out there, fifth and sixth graders, running in the, in the vault, so, and Bates was able to come in ahead of them, so...
(laughing). I had to push it.
For those of you who don't know, the Brookhaven Bolt is run to benefit, all the money, the proceeds go to Ashford Park out there, so that's a great cause. Um, any other announcements? All right, any reports and presentations? No reports and presentations? All right, old business.
Madam Council, the old business is the consideration approval of an agreement between DeKalb County and City of Brookhaven for police services. We'd ask that you just, uh, table that to the next meeting, uh, the city manager, and I'll be meeting again with the county manager to continue to work on that process.
Bill, can you pull your microphone down?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we table the, um, the consideration and approval of the intergovernmental agreements between DeKalb County and the City of Brookhaven, both for police services and for parks and traffic services.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of, uh, tabling the IGA for police services, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item?
Madam Council, the next item is ordinance, uh, two thousand thirteen oh five oh two, this is an ordinance to amend alcoholic beverages.
No, let's see, uh, the parks.
No. Council member Chase Williams, uh...
They address police at parks?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a motion.
Sure, all right.
So you moved ahead of this.
Okay, all right.
This would be, this is an, uh, ordinance is a second read, uh, to amend, uh, alcoholic beverage ordinances, uh, for the City of Brookhaven.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I so move.
Nope, this is number one?
I believe that y'all were, there had some discussion about what...
There were different motion on the floor.
Well, we're gonna open this, and then we'll move to discussion.
If, if, if it is...
Motion needs to be read.
If it's the will of the council to go ahead and, uh, pu, push this back to August twentieth, then you can make a motion to defer.
I'm good, I'm, I'm good at motion.
Okay, go ahead.
May?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I move to defer ordinance two zero one three dash oh five dash oh two, amendment to chapter four, until Tuesday, August the twentieth, at which time council will reconsider, based upon a report we are requesting from our police chief, as to the need for council to address current closing hours for businesses serving alcoholic beverages.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I would hope that we would hear both from our police chief and a wide variety of, um, citizens, residents, business owners.
Yeah, yeah, I'd, I'd like to second that, that this, that the intent of pushing this to such far date is to get more public input, evidently there's been a lot of public interest in this, and we, as elected officials, want to hear from all sides on this issue, so...
Well, we had a very constructive airing this morning for business owners that went out of fairly short notice. We learned a lot from you all, we're listening to what you say, we appreciate the input, and we're gonna continue to solicit it, and, uh, we'll move a form, move forward at this point with, uh, a deferral.
But we'll have another, uh, more opportunities for meetings with the public, with residents, with businesses, uh, with staff, uh, to consider other changes and other input on what our alcohol serving close time should be, so we'll give you plenty of notice for that, uh, so that you can, uh, research, and come talk to us and tell us your opinion, just like you did today. So, and that was just the first step, like I've mentioned this morning, so we've heard from businesses, we want, I've heard from residents, I've heard from businesses, I want to hear from more from residents and more from businesses as well. So, um, we appreciate the, the number of people that showed today that expressed their opinion, and we want more of that.
And we, uh, discussed this, and, uh, probably a good idea is to have both residents and businesses together airing each of your concerns, so you can both understand and, uh, they can see the sensitivity that exists, you can both see the sensitivities that exist on both sides.
Did you have any more? All right. Is there, uh, any more discussion? All in favor of deferring the ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero five dash zero two until the date certain, August twentieth, which, which time we'll receive report? Signify someone saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, please enter into the minutes that this ordinance has been deferred. Next item?
Next item, Madam Council, is ordinance two thousand thirteen oh five oh one, an ordinance, uh, to change the charter of the City of Brookhaven, that shall be amended upon proper passage, section two dash fifteen, ordinance form, procedures to be, uh, revised, first adoption, second read. Madam Council, this is, this is your ordinance that will allow you to have one read ordinances by home rule. This is your second read on this, and if, if this is your desire, this would be an appropriate time to make a motion to approve that ordinance, and vote on it, and take out the necessity for any more two read ordinances.
A motion on the floor.
I so move.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of, uh, passing of this ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter into the minutes that this ordinance has passed. Number three?
Madam Council, this is an ordinance two thousand thirteen oh five oh four, this is an ordinance to amend chapter fifteen, licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations, article twelve, sexually oriented business, the code of City of Brookhaven by definition of feature by amending the definition of sexual... definition of feature, by amending the definition of sexual device shop, and by adding spacing requirements for sexually oriented businesses, to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for adoption and effective date, to provide for codification, to provide for other lawful purposes. This is a second read. Mayor and Council, this is the same ordinance that you passed by emergency ordinance on your last, on your, on your last meeting, and this is the second read of this ordinance that we're passing as a regular ordinance.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move we approve ordinance 2013-05-04, ordinance to amend Chapter 15, Article 12, Code of the City of Brookhaven, by adding definition of feature, by amending the definition of sexual device shop, and by adding spacing requirements for sexually oriented businesses, to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for adoption and effective date, to provide for codification, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter the minutes that this ordinance has passed. Number four.
Mayor and Council, this is ordinance 2013-05-05, amendment to Chapter 7, Construction Board of Appeals, is the first read. Mayor and Council, on previous occasion, staff had provided an ordinance that was outlining the methodology to appoint what is actually a technical review board, commonly called construction review board. And it was modeled after the Cab ordinance. Subsequent to that point in time, after reviewing the charter, that charter provides that the mayor in all instances appoints the members of the board, whereas in the Cab scheme, the CEO gets one and all commissioners get one. So in order to conform to the city charter, this is proposed to be amended, so that the board may be...
Mr. Mayor, I move that...
This is the first read on this, we'll have to do it next time.
All right. I like your...
I just have a point of order. Bill, we just passed an ordinance for one read. When does that go into effect?
Well, the mayor hasn't signed it yet.
Gotcha.
And just in abundance caution, I'd wait till next weekend.
Fine. Appreciate it.
All right, number five. That was number four we just did, right?
Yes.
No, it's the first read.
First read.
So we just have a read on it. Have opinions?
I want some. Correct. Number five.
Mayor and Council, this is Resolution 2013-05-05. This is a resolution to approve the formation of Brookhaven Governmental Finance Corporation. Previously, we briefed on that in the work session. If you want to know, we can do it.
There's a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution RES 2013-05-05, a resolution to approve the formation of the Brookhaven Governmental Finance Corporation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Three seconds, all right. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, please enter the minutes that this resolution has passed. Other business? Is there any other business? All right. Public comments. Now we have another public comment section, so if anybody has any more comments or they want to make, oh, okay. You still got to fill out a form.
Ronnie, you should have six of these filled out.
Right. Statement of age, please.
My name is Dennis Eisenberg.
Dennis Eisenberg, okay.
I don't, I'm not a resident of the city of Brookhaven. I used to be, I moved away. But when I lived here, it was a great experience because everything is nearby. I worked for Cream Ultra Lounge, and the, the people about moving the operational hours is going to affect a lot of businesses. We bring about 80,000, 90,000 people a year to the city, and they not only spend money in our facility, but they spend money all over the facility. We are located on a big plus shopping center. They spend their money there, they spend their money at the gas station and everywhere. If that ordinance will be passed, there's going to be a lot of taxpayer money that will not be going towards the city. The people will just spend their money in a different place. And this is a great city. I love living here. I moved away one and a half years ago, but I'm hoping I'll be able to come back and live here again. It's a really great place where, one of the, one of the few places in Atlanta where you can move without having a car. In Atlanta, public transportation, unfortunately, it's not really great. I came from Russia, where you could travel from one end of the city to another using a public transportation. Here in Atlanta, it's not such a great opportunity, it takes too much time. But when you are living in the city of Brookhaven, you can do pretty much anything you like without having, having the need to have a vehicle. And if that resolution will be passed, people will have to travel outside of the city to, to do something else but work. So that will create a lot of movement of the money from outside of the city instead of staying here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got to fill out a form, Ronnie. You did? Who's next? Justin Bates up?
Joe, I want to thank you for doing as you said this morning that you would do. I want to thank this commission, I guess, sorry, your council. For being open to discussing this and working on it. It means a lot that you guys have done it. It means a lot to a whole lot of these people here. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Carmen Ruz.
Carmen Ruz. I'm relying on Dana's pronunciation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Carmen. I'm a bartender at Cream Ultra Lounge, 3249. Couple of us are here in support of the group as well. And I'm here basically representing the club, trying to understand kind of why this is the focus that you guys have decided to put emphasis on. The business is thriving. We're in an area that's constantly growing. The community is excited about the opportunity to have an establishment there. As another representative stated, that's a responsible environment for our clientele to come and enjoy a social environment where they're able to just enjoy mixing and mingling. And by affecting the hours of operation, whether it be the time that the copulators or the time that you're cutting off the service to liquor, it's going to obviously affect the livelihood of us. You know, our clientele comes in a certain time, and it is a late-night establishment. And so when you're making these types of decisions, I personally do think that it's, you know, relatively irresponsible because you have to think about, obviously, the individuals who are going to be affected by it. It's going to be our customers and, honestly, ourselves included. And we choose to work at that particular establishment because we obviously enjoy working in the city, we enjoy the facility. And so, you know, we don't want to uproot our lives because of something like this. When you have a situation where if you're impacted by one particular situation, then you obviously pay your emphasis on that club. But, you know, if you're operating a responsible establishment, I don't really see the need to kind of blanket ordinance over the entire, the entire city for that reason. So in support of, obviously, all the bartending, going staff, I do ask that you continue to circle back around to this topic, put a lot of emphasis on thinking about the families and livelihoods that are going to be affected by putting something out there like this. And, you know, we just, we want to keep working, and we want to continue to serve our clients in a, in a manner that they're used to and they're accustomed to, because we don't want to uproot them and send them to the Cab County so that they can begin to enjoy their establishments there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Jasmine Burns.
Jasmine Burns? No more Jasmine, no Jasmine Burns?
Number one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Did Ronnie fill out a form? He claimed he did. Does he have to fill out another one? Susan?
For another topic. Will you just tell me that this one?
Okay, okay, can? You don't need to fill out one if you have something else. Definitely put that clock on.
This morning, I was driving by, I don't really need a loudspeaker, and I saw this outdated sign, and I thought whether we have a bluegrass theme or like they had last week in Shandly with tams, that was beautiful, or Brookhaven Bolt, this sign, and we could add on it, the city of Brookhaven, and I thought that I would give this to the City Manager and you. So if we went ahead and did pro, and we printed up a few hundred of them, and we have functions, whether it's a bluegrass gig or the bolt or whatever, we have these in place so when all of us, we were going to hang the signs, I think it would be just a great thing.
Ronnie, 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 let me hold that.
I want Marie to take it home with her.
So everybody can see, this is what Ronnie's talking about. Emergency no parking.
Well, it will say, city of Brookhaven, emergency, no parking and whatever, for the function.
Ronnie, dude, looks like you stole that sign.
I borrowed it. It's outdated. I borrowed it. That's what I'm grabbing at.
All right. Joe, don't receive stolen property.
I wanted to thank y'all. I'm in the back row, and I'm listening to everybody, and I'm watching all y'all's expressions. And I want to thank y'all for being open-minded, because the way that you become a good politician is you listen to your peeps that elected you. It's not what you think, it's not what you think, you think, any of y'all, it's not your personal opinion, it's the people who voted you in. And I love to see y'all with open minds up here, because it's a great thing to have an open mind and then to listen to your taxpayers tell you how they really want you to vote, instead of trying to spend a million dollars on a frivolous lawsuit that you don't have to. And because I don't want you to spend my tax dollars, and I don't want you houses in Asher Park in Brookhaven, and my tax money, I do not want you, any of y'all, to spend it on a lawsuit. We have a lot more issues we got to worry about in Brookhaven. Thanks, guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ronnie. Any more comments? All right. So the public comment section is closed. Mayor's comments? No, I don't have any, I don't think, just other than thanking everybody for coming and participating. We'll keep listening and learning and making sure we do what's right for our citizens and what the best interest for our citizens are. Executive session.
Need to have one litigation matter, maybe.
All right. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
I move, Council, to executive session.
Second.
For one litigation matter?
For one litigation matter.
Second.
Is there a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of going into executive session, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Mayor and Council, I don't expect that there will be any votes that would be taken afterwards. You know, I only expect that if we come back out, it'll just be for adjournment for the purposes of the audience, if they want to know that.